Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Welcome. My name is Ed Bilecki and I happen to be the Chair of the Democratic Town Committee. We're very happy that you're here tonight. We're excited to share the evening in this program with you. I just have a couple of housekeeping items before we get started. For those of you that are new to this auditorium, the bathrooms are up the back across the hall. And in terms of questions, there's going to be a question and answer period. We'd like you to hold your questions until the Q and A. And when the time comes, the Attorney General will ask you to raise your hand and acknowledge you to ask your question. So we're very excited about that. We have some information tables for you to check out after the program if you haven't had a chance to check them out beforehand. And we have some other couple of organizations here like Moms Demand Action. They have their T-shirts, their red T-shirts on if you want to meet and talk to them. If any of you are interested from Kingston, we have our meetings monthly. This month, we have a special meeting, which will be Wednesday, May 23rd at 7:30 at the Kingston Library. If you'd like to come, you're welcome to see what we do and what we're working on. We'd love to have you. And I just want to say that I just want to thank our event coordinator, who's our Vice Chair, who is LeAnn Faye. And I'd like to introduce her tonight to start our program.
Thank you, Ed. I'm just going to put this back in there. Can you guys hear me back there? All the way back there? Thank you. Okay. Well, thanks for coming tonight. Thanks for braving the ominous clouds out. I don't know what that is, but you're here and that's all that matters. We're really excited. Kingston Democratic Town Committee is really excited to have you all here. We've been really trying to build our base and really get some folks out to even share, you know, every perspective. So it's my pleasure to introduce a long tradition, as you can see, of female leadership here in Massachusetts. We have our former Massachusetts Senate President Therese Murray. We value her important work on the original healthcare reform legislation. And she authored three additional healthcare bills focused on cost containment, quality and access to care. Now she, in her tenure as President of Massachusetts Senate, she made international economic development a priority. And now, seeing the importance of international economic development, she has founded an organization called Ignite. So on behalf of KDTC, we want to thank you for over 22 years of service to Massachusetts Senate and continuing to fuel the fire of innovation of economic growth. Please join us and welcome former Senate President Therese Murray.
We have a number of people who I'm going to announce before I begin today and some on the way who are not here as yet. We do have a member of the Board of Selectmen. Kathy Lenatra is over here. She is also running for the 12th Plymouth District Representative seat. Wish you luck. We have Deborah Rudolph, who is running for the State Senate seat in the Plymouth and Barnstable District. And I understand that the rest of the selectmen are actually on their way here, as well as the new Tom Town Administrator. So thank you all for being with us. Yes, I'm going to talk about him in a second, but not at length because he can do that himself. But thanks, everyone, for coming out because we have no idea what this weather is going to bring to us. But hopefully, it'll be all over by the time we leave this evening. It's great to be here this evening and to look out and see so many, so many familiar faces. And before I do begin, I want to take a moment to thank my friend and colleague and Kingston's former state Rep. as of last Friday, Tom Colter, for his work and commitment to the people of this district. So thank you, Tom, and I'll say that again to him. When I was President of the Senate, I had a sign behind my desk with a quote that read, "Well-behaved women really make history." And that sign and that quote reminded me each and every day why I ran for office and why leadership was important. Because as a woman, as a legislator, as a leader, and most importantly, as a human being, I had a responsibility to speak up and to fight for both the people I represented and for all of the people of the Commonwealth. Very often, that isn't an easy task, but in times when a voice is needed, true leadership is shown through those who take that deep breath, step up and move forward and put themselves out there. So I'm very pleased to be here tonight to introduce someone who has stood up and fought time and time again for you, for me, for our families, our neighbors and our entire Commonwealth. And that, of course, is Attorney General Mara Healy. Mara has been here, there, on the front lines as a leading voice in Massachusetts and across the country. When she sees an injustice, she has stood up and she's fought for our environment, for the safety of our children and our families, for access to healthcare and for equal rights for everyone. Whether it's finding ways to combat the opioid crisis or protecting consumers or standing up for college students and their families struggling under crippling loan debt, Mara has been there and she will continue to be there for each and every one of us. I'm extremely proud that she has accomplished on behalf of our Commonwealth, and I know that she's going to continue that work and she's going to continue to make history. So it's my honor not only to introduce her, but also to give her her own "well-behaved women really make history" plaque. Attorney General Mara Healy.
Thank you. Come on now. Come on now. Hey, thank you so much. I love that. So great. Wow. I don't know if my mic is on. Is my mic on?
Yeah.
It's on? Okay, that's great. I'll put that right up there. Senate President, thank you so much. I want to give you a hug. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you. It's great to be here with all of you tonight. And I just want to, in particular, thank you so much. You know, the Senate President did something that was not easy to do, and that was rise to a level, the highest level of leadership in our state. And she ran such an effective institution. She's made such a huge difference across so many fronts. But I think more than all of the important pieces of legislation that she moved through, I think about the way in which she did it. And I think everybody who knows Therese Murray knows that she cares deeply about the community she hails from. She's never forgotten her roots. She's never forgotten her path. And that's why she brought such care and compassion and tenacity to the work that she did every day. And so I think about that resilience. I think about that tenacity. And I think about that toughness. And, you know, a lot of that job, I'd imagine, it requires one to make hard calls and hard decisions. And it's not about making friends, but it's about doing right by particularly those families who are counting on it, who are really, really vulnerable. And so, you know, as a woman, I look at you as a model, partly for what you did and the ability and grace and class to just sort of, you know, move through things, but maintain a resilience and a toughness because people are worth fighting for. So I want to thank you for everything that you give. It's wonderful what you're doing now with Ignite. You know, my family, I'm sorry, my family's more from the North Shore. My mom and dad are from Newburyport, Massachusetts, and that's where my siblings live. So thank you very much for welcoming me to this part of the state. It's a state I've come to, it's a part of the state I've really come to know and appreciate. And, you know, even as you move a little bit further south, I realized something. I've been making a mistake for a long, long time. Instead of driving north up towards the North Shore and Hampton Beach where I grew up, I should be driving south. The water is a lot warmer. It's a lot nicer. And finally, notwithstanding tonight, maybe we'll actually get to beach season. To Ed and LeAnn, thank you so much. Thank you so much for your advocacy. Thank you to the Town Committee here in Kingston for opening your doors tonight, for bringing people together. I want to thank other electeds in the room, as well as those who are seeking office. I think it's really important right now that people are out there throwing their name in the ring and getting after it and willing to stand up and willing to say, you know, "Put me on the ballot." I want to thank Tom Colter. I know he's got his hands full right now. But, look, my own stepdad just got recently elected as a selectman back in the town where I grew up in. And I remember my dad, Dad growing up, you know, he was a selectman too. And I remember actually going to the town dump with him on Saturdays. Was that right? Because that's actually where everything happens. And so, we'd go to the town dump and I'd be there as a little kid and I'd be standing next to him. And in our town of 1,500 people, the other selectman was the owner of a dairy farm and the other guy owned the lumber mill. And the three of them would just sort of stand there and I'd watch as people would come up to them. Maybe they need brush cleared from their property or the side of the road. Maybe they needed a zoning variance. You know, maybe a senior needed help with a home heating bill. And, you know, I just remember them being there to listen and then to take action. And so, you know, I've never forgot that, that that's what public service is supposed to be about. How can you help people? How can you meet people where they are? So I got to give a special nod to all the selectmen in the room tonight because, you know, you're really on the front lines for so much. Good evening. It's great to see you. Thanks for having me down here. The Senate President said very nice things about you, by the way. I'm sorry. Sorry you missed it. So thanks for coming out tonight. You know, I've been doing these town halls for well over a year now. And I've been doing them because I really believe that for me to do this job well and to be the people's lawyer, that's what I ran as Attorney General. I believe the role of the Attorney General is to be the people's lawyer, the people of the Commonwealth, to do my job effectively. A big part of this is making sure that I am out there listening, you know, that I am understanding your needs, your concerns, and that we're having a conversation. I also think it's important, though, that I give you sort of a status report too, so that you know what my office, what our office has been up to. I met Ayanna, who actually goes to school here tonight. She's in fourth grade. And I won't make her put up her hand, but she says she's here tonight because she wants to be a lawyer. And I said, "I hope you still want to be a lawyer after you listen to me." Are these lovely folks asked questions? But, you know, that really is something I believe deeply, that the role of our office, especially in this time, is to be there to make sure that we're listening to people and acting to help deliver to them here in this state. Now, you know, a few things about the work that I do. Some of you may not know, but the Attorney General's office actually makes money for the state. We're one of the few state agencies that generates money for the state. Last year alone, $800 million. For every dollar spent on my office and the budget process, we're typically bringing back upwards of $17 for the state. What does that look like? Well, when you call and you say that you got ripped off, you know, as a consumer, and we take action and we get money back in your pocket, that's money back to consumers and taxpayers here. Sometimes, we're going after fraud in the system, those who abuse our Medicaid system, for example. That's really bad because there are people who need those services, so we go after fraud and waste in the system. Some of you know that I've been challenging some of our utility companies who want to increase your electric bills and your rates, right? And so, our job is to come in and say, "No, not on our watch. It's not fair to the consumers, and we're looking to save ratepayers' money." Sometimes, and increasingly in this state, we have some employers who aren't paying by the rules. There are a lot of people out there working who aren't getting paid the wages that they're due. Some of them are getting stiffed on overtime or minimum wage. Some of them are just literally not getting paid. And, you know, my Fair Labor Division is out there with investigations and cases, making sure that we're returning money back to the workers. That's important to the workers and their families, but it's also important to all the employers who are out there actually playing by the rules, right? That get disadvantaged by those who don't play by the rules. So that's one thing I just wanted you to know, that we're open for business. There's a reason, you know, we staff all those hotlines. If you've got a consumer issue, if you've got an issue with a health insurance company, if you have student loan debt, we've got a whole unit devoted to that. We are here for service and open for business. The other thing that I just wanted to touch briefly on is I think the importance of what you're doing tonight, just by the fact that you showed up. And I know, I'm listening to this, I came down from Boston and it was really bad. And God knows what is happening outside right now. But all of you braving the weather, taking time to get out on a Tuesday night to be here. Now, more than ever, not just in this state, but across this country, we need active citizenship. We need people who are engaged. We need people who are registering people to vote. We need people who are running for office. We need people who are supporting people running for office. We need people who are going to their legislature and saying, "Hey, you know, this is the kind of policy I want to see for my family, my community." We're also a democracy, so we're not all supposed to agree all the time. The important thing to me is that people be engaged, people be involved. It's really sad to me when I think about in Massachusetts during the last presidential election, 700,000 people who were eligible to vote in our state didn't vote. Didn't vote. We got to change that. And the one way to change that is to start to build some of the muscle memory about what it means to be in a democracy, the importance of registering people to vote. I was talking to my brother last night. He was rushing home. He's a lawyer. And he was rushing home to Essex to vote because, you know, there was a small, there was a town election again for selectmen. But like, I'm glad to see that he was like, well, not speeding on the highway, but he was speeding. Because like, it matters, you know? School committees, selectmen and the like. It matters for these races. It also matters for those of you who have children, who need to see and develop the muscle memory that this is part of what it means to be an American. It's part of what it means to be in a democratic society. And it's our obligation to be out there. So I want to thank you guys for being here tonight. Now, finally, I'm just going to touch on a little bit of what we've been doing in the office. And then, I want to open it up for some questions. The single greatest priority for me has been combating the opioid crisis. When I was running four years ago, people came up to me and talked to me about how devastating this was. I began to appreciate the scale of this because it seemed like every room I was in, somebody would come up to me quietly afterwards and talk to me about their son or their daughter or their brother or their sister or their parent. And it's why I made it a priority when I took office. First thing I did as your Attorney General is that I went after the maker of Narcan, who had jacked up prices in counties and communities like this one. And that meant that our first responders couldn't afford access to life-saving naloxone. We worked out an agreement, got the price reduced, made it available through a bulk fund that I helped contribute funds to, and now it's available to first responders at a low cost. We ran through that fund because, of course, we've used so much naloxone. And a few weeks ago, I put another $300,000 towards that fund because there should never, ever, ever be a situation where cost is a barrier to saving lives. The next thing we did is we had, I had my Medicaid team look at some of the doctors prescribing pills. Now, I know that people need access to pain medication, right? But we had pediatric neurologists and radiologists who somehow were only treating and prescribing painkillers to adults. And so, we went down through the list and one by one, shut down and went after bad prescribers who were putting this stuff out into the market. We know how problematic that was when just a few years ago, four out of five of our heroin users started with oxy and other pills. The next thing we did was to go after some of the dispensing practices, working with the pharmacy chains. And I'm proud. My office got the first of its kind agreements in the country where CVS and Walgreens agreed to train all their pharmacists before they were able to dispense opioids. They made them check the prescription drug monitoring database. Why? Because we wanted to cut down on doctor shopping and pharmacy shopping, you know? And we've worked extensively and continue to in leading the nation's largest public health investigation of its kind into the six branded opioid manufacturers and distributors. The American public deserves answers. We need to get to the bottom of this and we sure need to have accountability. It became public today that we expect to be suing Purdue Pharma in the coming weeks, one of the makers, but certainly, you know, at the very center of this problem. So I want you to know that that's what we're doing in the office. But something I believe now more than ever is the need to stop addiction before it sets in. We got to do everything we can to help those who are sick, help them have access to the care and treatment that we need, improve behavioral health services and our resources. But I believe we owe it to every fourth grader and third grader and fifth grader and sixth grader out there all across the state to give them education, to give them tools, to help them make healthy decisions. A few weeks ago, you may have seen, I was out in schools across the state, middle schools like this one, and I was announcing my new initiative. It's called Project Here. I decided about a year ago that because we don't really have a statewide substance use program in all of our schools, that we got to try to supply one. So I teamed up, got some money from the GE Foundation, reached out to my pal Chris Heron, who many of you know Chris and his wonderful, wonderful work. And together, we built this program with Health Resources in Action. It's an evidence-based program, age-appropriate, that we have now made available to every public middle school in the state. And it's plug-and-play lesson plans, ready to go for teachers, parents, coaches. It gets students engaged, you know, in learning about substance uses and really the gamut of things that they're going to have to confront. And more importantly, we're about ready to release a mobile app. One of the reasons I call it Project Here is we got to meet kids where they are. And so, we're going to put in their hands a mobile app that will allow them to not only ask questions confidentially 24/7 to actual experts, but also help them get connected with a whole network of behavioral health resources. And, you know, I just firmly believe this is where we got to be. I spend a lot of time with kids who are in recovery, including most recently, I was out at one of our recovery high schools. And those kids talked to me about how they grew up, 11, 12 years old, experimenting with no idea, no apprehension about what was going to happen. What they thought was benign, smoking marijuana, suddenly turned into other things. And we owe it to our young people to do far more than we're doing and to act with a greater urgency than we're acting with right now. And so, I just want you guys to know this because I know that if I asked for a show of hands right now, one in two of you would know somebody right now who's seriously addicted and struggling. You know, one in four of you, if not more, would know somebody we've already lost to this terrible crisis, right? The other problem that's come on, because I learned this through my conversations, vaping and juuling. My program's going to cover everything because that's a major problem in a lot of our middle schools and high schools. We got to get a handle on health and wellness. Now, the other thing that, you know, I'll talk about and close with, you know that we've been busy in the office and, you know, during, since over the last year and a half, we have ended up bringing any number of suits against the Trump administration. I'll tell you what that's about. Massachusetts pioneered access to healthcare, universal access to healthcare. It's not perfect. It's still too expensive for you all, I know. But that's a big deal, you know, this recognition that people should have access to healthcare. So when the President decided to essentially work to sabotage the Affordable Care Act and threaten to cut off Medicaid funding to our state, I sued. Because actually, cutting off Medicaid funding in the midst of an opioid crisis is a really I also believe that, not just as a matter of privacy and liberty, but as an economic imperative, women should have an ability to make reproductive healthcare choices for themselves. And so, when the administration decided that they were no longer going to provide insurance coverage for contraception, we sued. Because again, it's about, you know, standing up. You know, on the environment and clean energy, we're in an area right now, and I don't have to tell people in this room, a lot's changed in our energy space. Look at the decommissioning right now of Pilgrim, you know, and the possibility of procurements around onshore and offshore wind. You know, this is an area that is poised to actually take off when it comes to the clean energy investments in a clean energy economy. Already in Massachusetts, there are more clean energy jobs than total coal jobs in the entire country. So when the administration said to us that they were going to force us as ratepayers to subsidize coal and nuclear at the expense of investments we've already made in renewables, we sued because we got to stand up for jobs, we got to stand up for our economy, and we got to stand up for our commitment on combating climate change. And finally, you know, I'll end with this. Student loan debt, you know, it's, I just spent the afternoon dealing with the Mount Ida situation. You know, that's a school that's closing down. It's so sad for these students, and it's not the first time this has happened where a school just like shutters its doors. I remember that happened a few years ago to another school, ACI. And in fact, there were nine students alone who went to ACI from Kingston. And we had to work very hard to get that company to discharge all those students' loans, to wipe them clean, because they were the victim, it turned out, of predatory practices by a for-profit school. Now, Mount Ida's not a for-profit school, but the way they went about this was terrible. And so, we've been working really hard to try to get these students into other programs, other ways to continue their education and to try to get them into better loan repayment options and maybe even help them qualify for what's called a loan discharge when a school closes. That's what we've been up to. But I just mention that because I've spent a lot of time the last three years on the issue of student loans. Student loans are $1.4 trillion and growing. It is way too expensive to go to college. And the kinds of degrees that we're getting don't necessarily even match the kind of workforce that we need right now. That's something we got to change. But I want you to know that I set up a student loan unit because so many families are drowning in debt. And if you or someone you know has student loan debt they can't afford, please call my student loan unit. Because we've actually been working to help families directly who may qualify for other loan repayment options, okay? So I just wanted to put that out there. But again, thank you for your activism. Thank you for your engagement. I'm sure we have a lot to talk about, so I hope you ask away for those comfortable. It's always helpful if I know your first name, maybe the town you're from. And I'd like to, at this point, open it up for questions. Yes?
I'm Mary from Pembroke. Are you able to sort of take over some of the issues that people have that aren't getting help now from the Consumer Protection Financial Bureau that's really going down?
Yeah. Yeah. So Mary asked a question about what are we doing to help consumers? You know, years ago, under the Obama administration, something called the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau was set up. Really, really important. It's brought back billions and billions of dollars to consumers who got ripped off as a result of predatory business practices. I mentioned student loans. The new guy that's taken over that operation, Mick Mulvaney, just closed down the Office for Students, okay? So all that work on student loans, done. So your answer is yes. That's going to, that's going to result in more work for offices like mine, to be there to enforce the laws. And we intend to do just that. And sometimes, it's on an issue of student loans. Sometimes, it's about, you know, a local car dealership who may have made a subprime loan or, you know, an unfair loan to a consumer or maybe, you know, I remember this woman from, named Kathy. She was, she's from right nearby here. And she walked in one day. She needed to buy a used car and she couldn't afford much, but she ended up driving off the lot with a car that she paid just under $10 grand for. And immediately, it broke down, wasn't working, because of course, the dealership hadn't disclosed all the problems with the car. And she also had signed up, unbeknownst to her, for a loan that essentially was growing astronomically. So in no time, she ends up with a car that doesn't work. She's over $20 grand in debt. She calls my office. My team looks into it. We discover there are like a whole bunch of Kathys out there, like 272 Kathys out there. And so, we took action and we got them their money back, you know, and changed the practices. So I want people to call our office because a lot of times, it starts with a single complaint and then we can open it up and really have a way to help more people. Thanks for the question. Really important. 617-727-2200 is the number, the general number in the office. And I really, I really hope you call because that's how we're able to take action, to try to help consumers. Yes?
Another Mary from Duxbury. I'm concerned about decommissioning Pilgrim. And my question is more of a general one. What authority does and will the state have to put in measures to better protect the environment, public health and our public? And I think the answer, the question of authority falls into two buckets. One, the authority of the state, once it is decommissioned and NRC has ended the license, so preemption... so preemption would not be an issue. The second bucket would be while it's decommissioned. There are concerns of how close the spent fuel is to the water. What authority would the state have? What bargaining chips do we have?
Well...
Do anything about it?
This has been, I know, this has been a really serious issue. It's something that I'm really passionate about, my office is really passionate about, what is happening at Pilgrim. It was disgraceful. A few months ago, when we had all that water, and we literally could not get an answer out of NRC about whether or not that plant needed to be immediately shut down. And that's a problem. I mean, what ended up happening, they took so long that eventually the storm passed and the waters receded and things were okay. But right now, as folks know, the plant is scheduled for decommissioning May of 2019. Here's what's important to me. You know, I have concerns about worker safety right now, I have real concerns about public safety. I grew up in the shadow of Seabrook Station, five miles, I was within that radius. You know, I have real concerns, obviously, about where the spent fuel is, is being stored. And I have a generalized concern that a company that's on its way out is gonna bail and not be there to provide the adequate resources to make sure that the right things are being done, right? So I'm gonna continue to be as strong an advocate as possible on this. You know, you asked the question, Mary, about who's got authority. Right now, really, it's with the hands of the NRC, you know, who, who hasn't really done its job historically that it's needed to do. We have spent countless, to say, to say the least, we've spent a lot of time with them over the last 18 months, regularly on them. I know you've seen my folks at meetings demanding action. Most recently, I was really frustrated, we got word, and it came through the press, they didn't even tell us, but they had reduced the number of monitors onsite, so immediately we said you need to restore the number of monitors that are supposed to be there. All I can tell you, Mary, it's not perfect, 'cause I, my office doesn't have the authority in this space. We do have, and will continue to exercise any legal means that we have in terms of action. I'm sorry?
Pacific gas and electric for economic concerns, and the Cooks case also, and Gorsuch indicated there are special areas.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you'll have a legal team or an attorney's general, attorney's general's office more versed in or more committed to this issue. It's been a battle for a long time, and just know that I'm gonna be on it all the way for the next, for the, not just for the next year, but, you know, obviously, the concern is what happens after that. And I'm open to continuing to send folks to stakeholder meetings, to engage directly with NRC and with energy and the like. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, with that water a few weeks ago, people would not have gotten out, right? I know that, you know that, and NRC knows that. So I think people need to continue to, to be vigilant there and, and know that we will as an office. Yeah.[811.13][811.13](APPLAUSE). In the back?
My name's Amy, I live in Bradlock, Marchville, and I have a question on flood insurance rates. How can we catch...
Yeah, boy, you know, this is, this is such a big issue. It's Amy?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, you know, we got involved early on, my insurance division, in some of these issues. And I, if you haven't already, feel free to call my Insurance and Financial Services Division to see if there's any more assistance that we can provide. You know, as policies change, I mean, I can only implement what's there in terms of the law, but I know that, that people were really disadvantaged as a result of some of the changes. No doubt, we have to deal with real issues of sustainability and resilience in terms of some of the, you know, the results of climate change and what that means for mapping and how they draw these things. So it's an imperfect situation. But I do want you to know that I have this insurance division out there. So recently, I think, you know, as an example, we went after a company called Assurant, I don't know if anybody has Assurant, insurance, but they were doing something basically that resulted in homeowners, you know, being charged for coverage they weren't actually given, something called forced-place insurance. So they were being charged for insurance coverage that they actually weren't getting, they were just getting charged for it. One complaint came in, we opened up an investigation, we ended up getting 20 grand back for 15 homeowners. That's the kind of stuff that we do. So if you have insurance issues, particularly related to, to home insurance, I ask that you get in touch with our office. On the flood business, we're gonna stay in touch with our state legislators here, as well as members of the federal delegation, and, you know, see if there are ways to, to help families through what has been a change and an adjustment, Amy. Yeah. Yes?
John, I'm from Kingston. I'm concerned about these agencies that are set up to do the people's for environmental safe, to be taken over by people who are in the, heading the offices that don't care about that. Is there anything Attorney General can do?
Well...
For all the jobs that they're doing...
Yeah, John, I appreciate the comment. John's question was, do you have concerns about federal agencies right now that aren't carrying out their responsibilities, that aren't doing the work that they're supposed to be doing? Yeah, I have a boatload of concerns, and that's why we sued a lot, to try to get them to do their job. It's also why we've doubled down within our office, and other state AGs have been as well, to try to step into the breach and the void, to make sure that we are enforcing laws to protect consumers, to protect workers against unsafe work conditions or from getting, you know, taken advantage of. Why we stepped in, enforce laws that are there to provide for cleaner air and water and soil and the like. It's a huge problem, you know? And I gotta say this, I don't, look, I'm a Democrat, okay? I'm a Democrat, and there are certain things and principles that I believe in, and I have colleagues and friends who are Republicans, and there's a certain view of that. But one thing I do believe in is that it's up to every American and anybody who serves in public office to actually do their job. And here's what's happened.[1030.33][1030.33](APPLAUSE). You know, I get so burned about somebody like Betsy DeVos, okay? Because we have sued and gone after so many for-profit schools that were raking it in on the backs of students. A lot of them are single moms, just looking for a way out or up. Veterans or service members who qualified through GI Bill, you know, money to be able to apply that to go to school. These are the ones who were taken advantage of by some of these for-profit schools. I probably had a dozen investigations or cases, you know, against the likes of Corinthian and Everest and others. What does Betsy DeVos do after we worked out a deal to get loan discharges for all these students who were the victims of predatory practices? She comes in, cleans house at the Department of Ed, and check the record on this, brings in all these executives from for-profit schools, they're now running the department, okay? They shut down the unit that was investigating predatory for-profit schools, they said we're not gonna do that, and now they're running the show. These are people who intentionally, over the last several years, lined their pockets on the backs of not only these students, but taxpayers, 'cause that's where the federal funding for those loans was coming from. So like, that, you know, that really hurts me, 'cause I see the effect of that when I meet, and I've met with hundreds of these students, 'cause I sat with them, we had them fill out affidavits so that they could get loan discharges. You know, to see how they've been victimized and to know that there's some federal agency that's in DC, it's got 100,000 loan discharge applications just sitting in a drawer, you know, that's shameful. Net neutrality, who ca, you know, how many of you believe that the internet should be, you know, free and open access to everybody? This is the way you do your bank? This is the way you get in touch with your doctor? This is the way you get access to health information? This is the way you go online now for a lot of education, right? This is the way of the world. But now you have a federal agency that thinks it's cool to charge people more, you know, for faster access to the internet. That's not cool to me. You know, I remember going out to Western Massachusetts, and I was in Orange, and it broke my heart one day, when I went into a store there, there was a little kid, you know, who was there with a computer, and it was kinda late to be kinda out, but there was no internet access, you know? That's a whole other issue, too, about the need for, for better internet access around the state. But my point is, you know, how can you have a federal agency out there actively looking to disadvantage people or advantage certain people? And not only people, but corporations, right? You know, so the big corporations out there, they can foot the bill for faster internet service, but mom-and-pop businesses, small businesses, which actually are the heart of our economy, not just here in Massachusetts, but all across this country, they're supposed to be stuck with a higher bill? That's not doing your job, you know? So I think that, that we're just gonna need to continue to do our job, because right now, we got a lot of people who are essentially foxes in the henhouse, you know, who have found a way to take advantage of and make themselves richer, or some of their friends richer, you know? We've seen the greatest growth in wealth to the very, 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 very top, you know, less than 1% over the last 15 years. And it looks like that's just gonna continue unless we continue to find ways, you know, to, to stop that from happening. So do your job continues to be my mantra, and until they will, we're gonna try to, we'll do ours and try, and try to, you know, do what we're trying to force them to do there. Yes?
Kingston, a proud public school teacher. For 25 years at the Ed reform, our schools are still under resource, some of the youth are poor, some are even more so. We have a testing culture, place to place the teaching, and push all the arts of the schools, and charter schools draining funds from already needy schools. How do you see efforts from, it sounds like Brockton, who are considering suing the state for funding? How do you see that happening? Are you a defender?
Yeah, Bob, that's a, that's a, that's a really important question. And, you know, I know we have some teachers in the room tonight, I wanna thank you for, for all that you do. My mom was a school nurse and a health teacher, my stepdad taught high school history and coached basketball for many, many years. And, you know, to me, it's really important to remember, Massachusetts, we, we started, we founded public education, you know? First place in the country to have public education. In fact, it's so important, it's in our Massachusetts Constitution. When John Adams wrote that... You what? Oh, the question, I'm so sorry. So Bob is a teacher, he asked about education and concerns about funding, he asked about potential suits by places like Brockton that, where there's an argument that they have not been funded to the, to the same degree as other districts, and what that means in terms of fairness and the like. And that probably was an unfortunate summary, but that's the summary I'm giving Bob's question. So, so I think public education is really important, because I'm somebody who believes that, you know, in life, we're not entitled to equality of, of result, but we gotta recognize that, you know, not everybody's starting from the same baseline. To you, I'm a basketball player former, and so I, but the baseline, you know, we're not all starting from the same baseline in life. And one thing that really helps level things up, and at least, you know, give people an opportunity to be everything that they can be, is public education. You know, I'm so, my four brothers and sisters and I, we were all public educated, you know, K through 12. It's really, really important. So something isn't working right now, Bob, within our state, because I do drive around, I live in Boston, and even within my own city, you know, I see real differences. And it seems to me that something that all of us in government should be fighting for and finding ways to make happen is, is a system that ensures better funding, better resourcing for schools, you know, regardless, regardless of socioeconomic status of those communities. And it's not easy, but I think that it's a real issue. I'm not gonna prejudge the position that I take with respect to any lawsuit, but I will tell you, I have concerns, and I have concerns about the fairness out there and about the result. And I think in Massachusetts, you know, there are any number of times, 'cause we're number one in this, we're number one in this, we're number one, you know, good isn't good enough, you know? And I think that in this state of all states, we could be doing better when it comes to ensuring better education cross the board, cross the board for our students. And I'm also somebody who believes that our failure to deal with some of this stuff, we end up paying for it on the back end. We just went through a big session in the legislature on criminal justice reform, right? Some important work was done there to try to make the system more fair, more effective. But, you know, I'm somebody who looks at that and, and, you know, thinks about third grade literacy rates, 'cause one of the previous predictors of whether a kid's gonna go to jail or go on to college is their reading level in third grade. So making these investments are really, really important. So good luck in the last few weeks before school is out and, and you're off to hopefully a bit of a break, I know it's very short. But thank you for the work, thank you for the work that, that you do, because I feel like teachers, like police officers, so much of what's happening in society is sort of laid on their door, and we need to pay more attention to the foundation and what's happening that's leading, you know, to certain things, and, and not putting all the responsibility on our schools or law enforcement or others. So thanks, Bob.[1505.21][1505.21](APPLAUSE). Yes?
I'm also, Bob, and I'm also a public educator, but this isn't about education. The Attorney General of New York has resigned, and I don't want, not, I wanna talk about the issues involved in that, but he was one of the champions for a lot of the pushback against the Trump administration for the things that they were doing. I know you were working as a colleague with him for a lot of these things. Is the person that's gonna replace him of the same caliber?
Well, I, I will tell you that, you know, I have to say, Bob, Bob asked about the resignation last week of the New York Attorney General, Eric Schneiderman, and his role and the office's role in countering some of the actions by the Trump administration, and sort of what, what the impact of that will be, and what, what person be who replaces him. Let me just say at the outset that, you know, I was absolutely shocked when I read those allegations. My heart goes out to the victims and survivors, I don't know if anybody's read the New Yorker piece, but it's, it's absolutely devastating, and I think these women and victims who come forward show such courage and bravery, and we gotta do everything we can to support those who've been victimized and their, and their efforts to lift their voices. And I just wanna say that, 'cause I think to me, you know, that's, that's what I think about first, when I think about any mention of, of that. The fact of the matter is this, I'm your Attorney General, but we're figureheads for our offices. It's not lost on me that the great work that I get too much credit for is done day in and day out by the 600 men and women who work in the office. They're the ones on the front lines, they're the ones in the New York office on the front lines, so we're not gonna miss a beat. The fact of the matter is, we've been working together, a group of us AGs, for a long time, on a lot of fronts, we work together bipartisan, actually, on a lot of fronts. A group of us, many Democratic AGs, have banded together and have been working hard over the last year and a half, we're probably up to more than two dozen lawsuits, most recently suing over the census. That work's gonna continue. And I know the energy level is high, I've reached out to my colleague, who is the Acting Attorney General for New York, I've known her, I've worked with her, she's a terrific lawyer, she'll run a terrific office. There will be an election in November that will decide the next New York Attorney General, but I think the tradition of a strong office there certainly will continue, and I continue, and I will continue to do my part, working with my colleagues, and bringing the litigations that we think are in the best interests of our states. Yes?
Speaking of Attorney Generals from other states, I'm Caroline, I live in Edmonton, you may even be cold with my car.
Is your last name Ellis?
Yes.
Oh, right. I'm not gonna reveal your phone number.
Okay.[1691.21][1691.21](LAUGHTER).
Yes?
Okay, I'll, I'll ask what...
Do you want me to ask your question?
Sure, I, I can ask it, that's easier.
Okay.
You talked about suing the Trump administration. If, if concealed carry reciprocity passes at the federal level, is that something that you and other Attorney Generals have talked about, um, for suing?
Yeah, Caroline's question is, if Congress passes a law that would allow for concealed carry across the states essentially, concealed carry reciprocity, what would you do, have, have the other AGs talked about this? I have to tell you that as a matter of public safety, supported by police chiefs and district attorneys and others, we will sue. There's a reason that Massachusetts has among the lowest, if not the lowest, gun deaths in the country.[1742.08][1742.08](APPLAUSE). We have, we have strong laws on the books, and we enforce those laws. And, you know, in some states, and I grew up in New Hampshire, you know, the laws are different. I think it's really important that we have the kind of background checks that we have. Massachusetts has a unique law that actually allows the police chief in your community to sign off and determine whether or not somebody's suitable for a license to carry.[1770.01][1770.01](APPLAUSE). And look, I think that's important, 'cause, you know, somebody may not, may not be judged mentally incompetent, but you may know that there have been five or six or 10 or 12 calls to that house on a domestic. And I think that having a law like that in place, you know, will help reduce the likelihood that guns end up in the hands of somebody who's a danger to themselves or to others. So, you know, I think that there are any number of laws we have here in place that, look, you're never gonna... look, you're never gonna end gun violence, okay? But I think there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a direct correlation between some of the laws we have and our gun deaths. Now, I will say on this issue, I mean, this to me is just, it's a terrible idea, the idea that somebody with a gun and a license to carry a concealed weapon can't, in another state, can just come into here. That's a problem, because we have laws in place for reasons that we think are in the interest of the safety of our community. So, we've looked at it, we've analyzed that. If that happens, I know there will be any number of states to challenge that kind of a law. Because again, it's about, you know, states' rights, actually, in this instance. Getting us to stand up and say, "We think we know what's best for the health and the safety of our residents," you know, "within our states, and so we're gonna get to make the rules on this." Yep.
Yeah, hi, Ed from Kingston. I wanted to follow up on that. And one point, there was a discussion between three Attorney Generals, like New York, Rhode Island, and Connecticut or something, about pulling together and trying to work to have regional, the laws be similar regionally, like to around, you know, around guns.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think, look, I think a frustrating thing for law enforcement is 60%, maybe a little bit more, that 60% of the guns that turn up in crimes here come from other states. You know, some of the states from the South, New Hampshire, Vermont, and the like, and that's a problem. And here's where I'd like to see resources: I wish we had a universal background check system, you know, across all 50 states. I wish we had more resources for data collection and track, and tracking of guns, and tracing of weapons back, you know, from crimes to origin. This is where I'd like to see focus and, and resources, so...
Is this something we can do regionally?
Well, I think there's, I, you know, we coordinate on our, on our gun trafficking work. I think that, you know, right now, I think that even if you work regionally, you know, I still know the pipeline and where these guns are coming from, and that's why I think it's important. You know, I'll tell you one thing we can do right now, folks: I think that we can, can support and advocate an extreme risk protective order. Some of the shootings that we've seen recently, it's just heartbreaking when you read these stories, whether it's Waffle House, or, you know, other stories. It's like, there have been too many instances where people who were a known danger to themselves or to others still had access to guns. And I think that an act, a law like that makes sense. Other states have these laws that basically say, that, "Look, if a family member or a law enforcement, you know, person, believes that this person is a danger to themselves," which is real, 62% of gun deaths in this state are suicide. If they're danger themselves or to others, you're able to go to court, you know, and through due process, and petitioning before a judge who's gotta make written findings and decide, "Yeah, we should take those guns away from that person right now." You know, to me, that's, that's about saving lives. And why wouldn't we wanna make sure that we have something like that on the books to try to, to try to make a difference? Thank you. Let me come back to you, John. Yeah?
I'm Kelly, I'm from Middleborough.
Yeah?
If the Safe Communities Act were not to pass, is there anything to be done about people like the Bristol County Sheriff, who performs federal immigration enforcement duties, regardless of whether he's supposed to work?
Well, Kelly, Kelly's question is about the Safe Communities Act, and if that act does not pass, what can be done here in Massachusetts? And you specifically raised the issue of the Bristol County Sheriff. I know there have been some allegations and stories about his conduct and the conduct of, of, essentially that jail. Now, I'll tell you this: so here in Massachusetts, I think that, you know, while Safe Communities hasn't passed, I think what you've seen is this: you've seen at the very local level, local law enforcement continuing to do the job that, that we've done. And we have worked, as a practical matter, Kelly, state, local, and federal law enforcement work together regularly to identify and, and hold accountable anybody who's out there as a danger to the community, committing crimes, or who has committed crimes. What you've seen, though, I think, in, in terms of recognition, is that that's where law enforcement locally puts its priorities, not on arresting and detaining those on civil immigration detainers. This idea of separating families, of breaking apart people who've been here for a long time, many of whom have kids, who are working, who are paying taxes, actually, is something that has not and should not be prioritized. Now, our screen, 'cause I also look at it as a matter of state resources, you know? We got, we got a huge opioid crisis to fight right now, we got a lot of stuff going on. And that's where I wanna see state resources and local resources go, you know, responding to the kind of calls that need to be responded to. Now, if it, you know, I also think it's been pretty detrimental. Folks have gotta look at what, what we've actually seen in the office. I started to get reports, just after the, the travel ban came down, of parents not wanting to send their kids to school for fear of detention and deportation. That's not good for those kids who are entitled constitutionally to an education, who are in fact, American citizens. You know, we have people not showing up for doctor's visits or pediatric visits as a result of the same fears. That's not good for public health or public safety. You know, crimes not being reported in neighborhoods because of fear, that's not good. And, and we sent out notice about that and guidance to communities, and have worked with law enforcement on those issues. So, whether or not the Safe Communities Act gets passed, that's sort of the state of affairs here. I think that you see communities and, and law enforcement working together, recognizing that there are police chiefs who know and understand, you know, what needs to be done within their communities that makes the most sense. And I am somebody who, I heard a heartbreaking story the other day, a woman who'd been here for so long, was picked up and, and, you know, separated from her four-year-old daughter. And, you know, and that girl is gone. We don't even know where she's gone, where she's gone. That's what we're trying to get an answer to. These kinds of policies don't make sense, and, and they're not ultimately workable, and they're not gonna improve safety in our communities. So, you know, I don't, I think we're learning more about allegations with respect to Bristol County, so I'll leave that for another day. But I, I wanna be clear: there's ways to make sure that we are enforcing the law and protecting public safety while also not violating constitutional rights. And just so you're clear about the travel ban and why I sued on that, you know why I sued on that? That weekend, and I was at the airport when that travel ban came down. You know who called me all weekend? The heads of our colleges and universities, who had students and professors stuck overseas who weren't gonna be able to work. Our teaching hospitals, which are an economic engine here in Massachusetts, who weren't gonna have research fellows and others be able to come and continue work here and study, and move our economy along. Our tech companies, our life sciences companies that are growing, not just up where I am in Boston, but starting to expand around the state, you know, who weren't gonna have the access to the global workforce that they need. So, you know, that's, that's what's going on here. And I think that certain actions, you know, end up being really detrimental, not only to, to the interests of immigrant communities, but, you know, fundamentally to our economy, you know, and how things are gonna work right now, given Massachusetts' place in this country and in the world. Okay. John? If I have any, Deb, if I have any other questions, you'll get them down to me. Okay. Yes?
Comment on the recent tragedy for the arm of law, police officers, like, after the killer, dozens of court appearances have been out found.
Yeah. Yep. Boy, Officer Sean Gannon, that is a, that was a most shameful and horrific act. I think about the men and women who work in my office and the state troopers assigned in my office. They are out routinely serving warrants and doing exactly what Sean Gannon was doing that day. I was down at the wake, I was down at the funeral, I had the, the privilege to listen to people talk about who Sean Gannon was, and what a remarkable, amazing, amazing person. And it is just so awful and so sad what happened, and so senseless. And to be honest with you, John, I don't know enough about what happened in the court system to understand how he was still sort of out. And that's something that does need an examination, because, you know, if there is somebody who has 120 entries on his Board of Probation record, and he's not, what, even 28 years old? How does that happen? Where did the system fail in terms of intervention? You know, and, and steps necessary, I think we need to look at. What do you need to do with people who are so dangerous like that, repeatedly engaging in, in serious, dangerous, violent conduct? What do we need to do about that? It's something that I wanna have a discussion about, and I'm open to working with the legislature, with the courts, with my colleagues as district attorneys on. Okay? Yes?
Hi, Mara, my name's Keith Hanson, I live here in Kingston.
Hey, Keith.
You talked about the tough gun laws we have here in Massachusetts, and how they should be the model for the country. We have what they call the Bartley-Fox gun law here in Massachusetts, which says that anybody caught illegally carrying a gun goes to jail for one year. I don't know if you recall back in '76 or '77 when that was passed. How many people have actually gone to jail for one year illegally carrying a gun here in Massachusetts? Can you give our broad, all-figure number?
Yeah, because, Keith, I appreciate the question. And, you know, the Keith question is about this law that was passed in 1976. I'm sorry, Keith, I was five, Bartley-Fox. But I take the point, it's a law that, that provides for imprisonment of one year if you're caught illegally possessing a gun, right? So, I don't know, the, my office prosecutes some gun crimes, but as you know, it's the district attorney's offices that really are the ones out there prosecuting the vast majority of those crimes. So, I can't give you a specific figure, I don't know. I can, I could find out. But, I'm sorry?
Do you know if anybody that has gone one year in jail but illegally possessing a gun in Massachusetts?
Oh, sure.
And that law?
Yeah, well, I mean, I know that people that are in jail right now for longer than one year on gun offense, on gun offenses. But, you know, I think that, I think that, you know, that's certainly something we can get an answer to, Keith, but I'm somebody who strongly believes in enforcing the law and enforcing that law.
A lot of these laws must not be enforced. We get thousands of laws on the books, there are more laws on the books, but they just not enforced?
Well, I'm, you know, I'm open to hearing about that, 'cause if there is an issue with that, it's something that, you know, I, I take seriously. You know, sometimes, as you know, you know, cases get prosecuted, and sometimes I know that we, as prosecutors, too, what we do is we don't always get the sentences that we ask for.
Right.
You know, I mean, my office is in, whether it's on a human trafficking charge or a drug trafficking charge. You know, most recently, Keith, we worked, one of the things I did as AG was to propose that we make the trafficking of fentanyl a crime, 'cause if you can believe it, that wasn't a crime in Massachusetts. And fentanyl is now in 70% of our tox screens, killing people, you know? 70% of the overdose deaths in the state are now directly tied to fentanyl. So, you know, I know we've had some experiences in office where we've actually prosecuted, you know, fentanyl trafficking cases, and, you know, sometimes we don't always get the sentence that we ask for from the court. But, look, I think we gotta do everything we can to reduce gun violence. And we do have a real problem with the trafficking of illegal guns out there. I marched with the mothers this, this, this weekend, you know? And I listened to the moms talk about, we've got 13, 14, and 15-year-olds shooting at one another, shooting at one another. That's not the America that I grew up in. Who grew up with that? With that was sort of like a normal thing, that people become numb to, that they become a sort of like, this feeling of like, "I can't do anything" sets in. And then you have people who are afraid to. I talked to one mom, and, and people are so scared within a community to even report or say something for fear of getting shot. That's not right. So, I, I, I'm open to, to looking at anything we can do, you know, from a number of fronts to reduce gun violence. And, and certainly, you know, make sure that we're enforcing the law. I've been enforcing a lot of gun laws, Keith, so I know you may not agree with all of them.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think he's gone to jail for one year for that, for that charge, just below, under the Bartley-Fox.
I'd have to look into that, but I, yeah, but I appreciate you raising it. Appreciate you raising it, okay? Yep?
Yeah, thanks. Ed from Kingston, I had a question about voting and persons with special needs or developmental disabilities and intellectual disabilities. 'Cause my daughter, who couldn't be here tonight, has been voting for a long time and using the machine.
Yeah.
I can't think of the name of it all of a sudden. You know, what, did you put the ballot in and it pops up? Has your office found any cases or whatever around people not being allowed to vote and stuff? Because we've found that to be the case, not here in Kingston, but in other places where we know people with disabilities.
Keith, so, question's about voting, and, and people with disabilities and their ability to vote. Have there been any barriers? You know, it's a good question. I don't know if we have any stories or evidence of that in my office. I do know that in my Civil Rights Division, we have a disability rights unit, and certainly, you know, voting's a fundamental right. And if there were instances of obstacles created, or hassles, or issues, I'd wanna know about it, and then work with the Secretary of State's Office and local election officials to make sure that people have the ability to vote. Now, more than ever, we gotta make it easier to vote, you know? It's why I support automatic voter registration, same-day registration, you know? I even think we should contemplate, you know, voting on weekends. It is so hard, you know? I think about what parents are doing in the course of a day, people are doing, you know, trying to get to a polling place before seven, you know, especially given how long it takes to get around in the state, transportation-wise. You gotta leave at like, 2:00 in the afternoon, and then you're not gonna get paid. So, like, we gotta find a way to make it easier to vote. I think Massachusetts should lead on this stuff. And, and if there are issues, you know, report them to my office.
Okay.
Okay.
One more, this last one?
And then I'll hang around. Okay.
Craig from Houston. As a parent, I'm looking at July first with some trepidation as the marijuana laws become legal for recrea, marijuana becomes legal for recreational use. And my question is, how is your office going to address the change in that law while still helping keep our, to keep our kids safe?
Yeah, man, Craig, Craig's question's about marijuana legalization implemented June, July 1st. I think this is, this is a real challenge. The law provides for a cannabis commission, I had an appointment to that commission. They've got their hands full right now, and we gotta make sure that we do this as right as we can, protecting public health, public safety. I've spent a lot of time, and my team has, talking to other offices where, in states where they've legalized marijuana, to try to learn what's worked, what hasn't worked. I, you know, oppose legalization. You know, I support a decriminalization, I support a medical marijuana, I did not support legalization, but that ship has sailed. And my job right now is to make sure that I am working with others to implement it in a way that is, that is true to the law, but, you know, protects public health and public safety. We got a concern right now about the intersection with federal law, because AG Sessions has been, to say the least, antagonistic, and changing the Obama position, which was to say, "We're gonna, we're gonna give marijuana crimes a much lower priority and focus on other things." And that's a problem, because then, you know, you got a situation where if under federal law, you're not allowed to do this, and that also means, you know, you're not allowed to bank and do certain things, it becomes a trash, a trash, that was subconscious, it becomes a cash business. And those of us in law enforcement get really concerned about cash business. And I think those who supported this and wanted the revenue should also be concerned about this as a cash business, too. So, we gotta, as a state, try to work our way through it. I will say, Craig, to you and to all parents, you know, do everything you can, and we gotta help with the education. You know, the concerns I have about edibles, I see the marketing. You know, this Juul stuff, I mean, Juul and vaping, you know, so Juul, this is a different issue, but you can put a lot of different things, including marijuana, into, into these, these vaping devices. Juul, for example, they, they sell it and package it just like an iPhone. It looks cool, it looks slick. You know, they even have skins that can cover the different vaping devices. You may have even seen them in your kids' bedrooms, right? This stuff is out there, it is bad, and we gotta do everything we can to, 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 to take care of our kids. You know, I saw the amount that Juul will send out, it's the equivalent of one package of cigarettes. But unfortunately, you know, kids seem to think that it's harmless. And, and, you know, I was in one high school on the North Shore the other day, so you can make fun of the North Shore, but 80% of the high school kids, it's estimated, are vaping. I was in another middle school, and they're talking about the fourth, fifth, and six-year-olds vaping. So, all I can say is, please, you know, find a way to talk to your kids. I hope my project here materials help, but, you know, this is something, this is a new world order, we gotta, we gotta figure it out. Okay. Listen, I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I hope that people continue to stay active. Think of our office as a resource. I do have some folks who work on my committee who are here in green shirts, Deborah Shaw too. And I wanna make sure, if you have any questions, if you wanna get involved in some of the work that we're doing, I am running for reelection, I'll be on the ballot in November. Anybody who wants to help, you know, sign up. But, but mostly, I want you to believe in democracy, I want you to believe in this country. I think that we have seen a level of energy and engagement that we haven't seen in a couple of generations. And it's our job to try to harness that and to try to move us forward. forward. And I believe ever optimistically about the future and about where we can go and you guys are all part of it. So, thanks for coming out tonight. Thank you, Senate President Murray. Thank you, Kingston Town Democrats. Thank you, thank you, Town Administrator. (Applause).[1767.63]